Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, April 8, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Thank you, Deborah. Gentlemen? Another great day in the City of Portsmouth. The first item, we have really just two items on the agenda tonight. Briefing by our General Assembly delegation on this last session of the General Assembly, and then work session on the budget. We have with us tonight Delegate Johnny Joano and Delegate Matthew James. Senator Lucas was coming, but at the last minute had a conflict, and she sends her regrets. And she apologized for the conflict. And so now that the General Assembly has really adjourned, in keeping with a tradition where we thank our General Assembly delegation, first, I personally thank the work that Matthew and Johnny did, and Louise and Senator Blevins. That place is a madhouse, it's a pressure cooker, and things are ever-changing. And our delegation brought home the bacon. And so it would be good for you to hear that from them without any filter from us.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Who's first, Senora or Beauty?
We'll go.
They happen to be both, bro.
I hadn't had a chance to read it all.
You want to go ahead?
Sure.
Sure.
It's my pleasure to be here this morning, and I'll be my usual brief stuff. It was a really...
This morning.
We had about forty-four hundred...
This morning.
This morning?
Yeah.
Say?
It's your pleasure to be here.
Yeah. We're trying to catch up. I'm trying to catch up. You've all probably read, we were at the veto session. The veto session went all the way until after 1:00. Johnny, so Johnny and I were sitting there. It started at 12:00 noon, and it went until the next day. So we were quite tired, but we had about 4,000 bills, and about 1,500 of those actually got passed. So if you've been up there, it is, it is a very quick process. And then the governor on veto session came in, and he basically had six vetoes and eighty-five amendments to his bill. So I'll just go over some of the brief things. We were successful, however...
Been here till one.
Oh, no. You will not be here till one. No, Johnny may keep you till one, but I will be going home. Just joking. We gotta have a little bit of fun with that. I had several bills. I had a pretty good workload this time. We were successful in getting a unanimous vote on a city charter bill, which you requested. We also had a voluntary economic growth sharing agreement with the Port of Virginia and the Infrastructure Development Zone. Importantly, that's the kind of bill that I really embrace, because what it basically does, without going into the details, it allows any of the thirty-two cities that are in that group, they can now enter into a joint revenue agreement on a new project or an expansion without coming back to Richmond for our approval. So if you decide as a council that you have a project that they want to do revenue sharing with the City of Suffolk, for example, you don't have to come back to Richmond for approval. You can work it out with the two councils, and I think those types of agreements work well. And it's just another way that we can give an economic development tool to the economic development staffs of the cities, because as you all know, I'm a firm believer in all good, most of the good decisions are made locally. And so that's one that we're going to try to get out of the way, and I think that's a good one. We also, I also was a patron with a couple of, and co-patron with some couple of bills to introduce a 120-day hearing period for any future Public-Private Partnership Act, so no city is forced in the situation that we are in. And I co-patroned that with Chris Jones. We also, I tried my best to have a lot of toll mitigation things coming up. Kenny, Mayor, you came up, and you saw me in rules defending, trying to get them to study best practices and some things. We've got two things that are being studied, and I'm sure Sherri will contact you. The bill that we introduced on the income tax deduction for tolls is being studied by the Tax Commission. They met on Tuesday. It's now in a subcommittee. They will contact you, or some members from Portsmouth, to come up and actually testify. The genesis of that bill is it would allow residents at a certain income level to apply for a tax credit for the money they pay for tolls if the tolls are in place. We're trying to do whatever we can to ease that burden on certain populations. As you all know, we had a couple of meetings, I had a couple of meetings in Grove Baptist and with a lot of folks, and we're trying to do a lot of things with the state in addition to the other things that are happening. We also, they also agreed to study in a transportation committee what some of the best practices are. There's going to be an informal study. And the other economic development bill that I worked with the Economic Development Directors, we're trying to get more money for the enterprise zone. Right now, the enterprise zones are going to be shrunk down to thirty-two statewide, and there's not enough money to be effective. What we're going to do is convene some groups around the state economic development folks and interested parties, and try to come up with a bill to expand the number of zones and to attach a budget amendment to that, so that if we get more money, we can diversify that. We also had a bill on machinery and tool equipment for the community college, so they're now a company that wants to contribute some equipment to the community college, can get a state write-off in addition, and we think that that'll get more things, and the community college worked well with us on that one. And last but not least, we worked on something I think that'll be helpful with the school divisions, is we have a bullying bill. We're defining what bullying is and those types of things. That's just a snapshot of some of the things that I worked on. It was a big session. The biggest thing that we worked on was, I'm sure you read about that in the paper, was transportation bill. For the first time in twenty-seven years, we have a transportation bill. I supported the bill, and those of you who saw the first committee it came to was Finance Committee. And I was one of the bipartisan members who voted for that bill to get it out of committee. Otherwise, it might not have passed, and it would have died. And I felt that we needed to do something. It wasn't a perfect bill, but we needed to have something. Importantly, and if you want to talk about that, we were able to put in a local option for Hampton Roads. And now the TPO has the job of figuring out how that money should be spent, but it should, the local option alone should generate in excess of $120 million year one. So we have a revenue stream. And importantly, all of the money that is raised in Hampton Roads has to stay in Hampton Roads, because the bill has a poison pill at the end of it. If any of that money gets spent on something that's not authorized, that local option goes away. So I think we finally have something for transportation. We've been trying to work hard on that, and that's a good overview. I don't know if Johnny wants to pick up. Johnny's on the Budget Conference. He can probably tell you all the good stuff. One of my biggest disappointments was the fact that I had a bill that would have restored the voting rights of nonviolent felons. It was heard in subcommittee. It was quite interesting, the administration supported my bill. The Attorney General supported my bill. The bill was defeated in subcommittee. So we're going to keep pushing that. There are people talking to the governor now. Maybe he can do that as executive order. I don't know. The other big bill that a lot of people have talked about as I travel in civic leagues is the Voter ID Bill. If they're going to vote in November, everybody, and I'm sure the registrar will do a great job, but the Voter ID Bill did pass, and they will have to show that ID. Otherwise, they will have to be doing a provisional ballot. And those are some of the things. But we're real busy. We got a lot of conversation. I want to thank the people from Portsmouth that came up to visit me. We had a lot of young people who I personally like coming up there, because they get a kick out of it, and, you know, especially the fact that one young man, he came down and sat at my seat, and he said, Delegate, I don't understand. You guys get to do everything that they tell us we can't do at school. You get to eat at your desk, and you get to all this stuff, because if you go down there, we keep snacks and stuff. And he said, so maybe I can cook. How old do I have to be to be a delegate? It was fun. We had a good time. So if there are any questions?
The transportation bill, is it true, in five years, we're supposed to have three and a half billion dollars in Hampton Roads? Is that what that equates up to?
Yes. Yes.
Secondly, what about education? You didn't mention anything about that. How do we fare with education this time around?
I think the education was fully funded. The disturbing part for me was not necessarily just the money and the funding. The state, the administration continues to want to institute certain things and taking money away from public schools. And I'm not opposed to alternatives, but if you're going, unless you fully fund public schools, why are you going to try this other things? I do think in the veto session, the Opportunity Act, which would have been more of, in my mind, it would have given the state the ability to take over failing schools, was not passed. They wanted to put some seed money into that, and that was not passed. Now, the administration may do that from an executive order standpoint, but I think in terms of funding, you know, Johnny, this is going to scare me, I'm sounding like Johnny Joano. Money is tight in Richmond. And I think we got as much money as we could for the schools. Certainly, I would have liked to have gotten more. But my bigger issue is the fact that I still don't think, we're trying to go into several solutions before we are drilling down and fixing the problem. One of the things that I really enjoyed, and I didn't talk about that one, was we've set up several bills that will allow us to do things like STEM programs and apprenticeship construction programs, and embed those into public schools on a regional basis. But I think the budget in terms of public schools was probably as good as it's going to get right now, until the economy comes. I don't want to take you too much into the economy, but the reason our, the economic indicators are lagging. We need about twelve more months of solid growth, and then I think you'll see some much more funding of the school divisions coming out of this budget. And depending on how it works next year, we may have some more money to give to schools. But I would tell you this, Mayor and the rest of council, that there is a sentiment among some of the legislators that they want to make sure that there's, if there's going to be an increase in money, a funding level, they want some accountability to. So that's coming down the pike.
Just for a moment, I must have missed something when you were talking about the enterprise zone?
Yes.
What is the state of that?
Right now, what the enterprise zones are, we did not, I pulled the bill. What I was tasked to do by several of my cities, especially Suffolk, was right now the enterprise zones were created in 1960, and they started out being fully funded. Now you have a situation where, if you go to Patrick Small, your Economic Development Director, he can tell you that a business that locates in the enterprise zone, probably based on the state budget, is reimbursed no more than 65% of what they are eligible to get, because it doesn't have the funding stream. And so what has happened over time is cities that have older zones, the zone application is worth, is good for thirty years. So after the thirty years, it's not renewed. And so the number of zones have gone down. And I think by, in the next two or three years, they're going to drop down to thirty-two zones statewide. And so other cities, like Suffolk, has said, instead of doing a citywide criteria for an enterprise zone, why don't you do a census track criteria? So what we want to do, what I want to do, what I intend to do, is pull together a work group of economic development folks from urban cities, rural cities, small cities, and say, let's come up with a policy or a new bill that will work, because it's one of the incentives that really work for small businesses, and attach it to a budget amendment. And if the budget amendment does not increase the funding, then you don't do the expansion. But it's a way, right now, the biggest challenge with getting the, in my opinion, enterprise zones bills and increased funding passed is because the constituency group is shrinking. I mean, one of the first things that I learned when I got in the General Assembly is, it's great to be up there, because you got one vote. The reality of it is, you need fifty other people to agree with you to get anything done. And if you only got thirty-two people on your side, it's not going to pass, no matter how good it is. So that's our strategy, to get more funding. And we've gotten some good, we've gotten a commitment from the administration, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, a lot of stakeholders, and we're right now looking at several dates in which we can meet to discuss that. And if you're interested in that, that's fine, because I think that's one of the best small business incentives that we have going, in my opinion.
Any other questions for Delegate James? Delegate, yes, sir.
The Voter ID thing, I hear more and more, is something we can do on our public television to get it out to the public about making sure they know the new one.
The answer is yes.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't part of that, aren't they, in the state, going to provide some booths to the registrars to provide IDs?
That's my understanding.
So which point, another problem for us, where are we going to put it at?
Might be a nice little PCTV show.
And I was thinking the same thing.
Put Miss Short on to explain what it is.
And I have a team looking at the space needs for the registrar. Dolores is really hurting for space.
This is going to make it even worse. This is going to make it even worse, when they bring this, when they bring this for the ID booth.
Takes up space.
She's touched base, I think, with a few of us, and really showed us what she's confronted with, and she definitely needs additional space.
And we're working hard to get that.
Good.
And to get it here in this building.
That'd be essential. Delegate?
Just very briefly, we started off, Governor Wilder, some years back, set up a rainy day fund. And if it wasn't for that rainy day fund, we wouldn't have had enough money for the past four years to fund every project that we've been trying to fund. And so we got to pay some of that money back. And this year, what we did was, we added 50 million to the 45 million that we were putting back in there. We owe 370 million is going to be required to be put in in 2014, 2016. That's how much we're short right now. But we'll be putting, at least we got 95 million in there from this year, which is twenty-five, roughly about 25% of it. So we should be in fairly decent shape next year, at least I hope we are, so that we can get the rest of that money in there, because the rainy day fund is, we use it for schools and everything else when we don't have sufficient funds. And we take it out, you can't take it out with so much. And so that's what we've been doing the last three, four years. And so now it's time to start trying to get it all back in there. State-supported and local employees in college facility are going to get a 3% pay raise in 2014. We had started off with a 2%, with a 2% raise, and then we went in for an additional 1% safety adjustment. In the session after, after the compromise took place in the conference committee, we went to 3% from 2%. And that's basically for state employees in college facilities. When we got to the resolution in conference with regard to the budget bill, I've got a bunch of numbers and figures here, but, for example, faculty judges in state support locals at additional 1%. So we're giving those 1%, even though judges in general district court handle local matters as well as state matters. And that was one of the issues that had come up. One of the biggest things that we had this session was Medicaid. And what happened on Medicaid was whether we set up the service program or we go with a federal program.
You're talking about the expansion now, Medicaid expansion program? Okay.
The expansion part of it. What's happened is, the Medicaid expansion program, there are about 400,000 to 500,000 more people in Virginia that might be eligible. And so the position the House and Senate took was to say, okay, what we'll do is, we'll have a federal program to see whether or not the feds are going to pay for this, since they passed it. Problem is, that if the money is not there, and we set up a state program, service program, then we're going to be responsible for that. And if the feds don't pay, then we have to come up with the money or tell the people, I'm sorry, you have to do away with the program. Personally, I don't want to have to tell anybody we're going to have to do away with the program once we initiate it. And so that's why we are going very carefully, and we've set up a process which will handle that. I have them beyond the committee. We haven't met yet, but I'm assigned to a committee that will be handling that portion of it.
Where's the governor at on that? I know he agreed with you before the budget was approved, that he would entertain it and then flipped afterwards?
No, he's still in favor.
He's still in favor? Okay. They were trying to flip him.
Yeah, the House and the Senate were in disagreement over that fact, but the House prevailed, because I don't think the program would have gotten through without it. So that's where we stand. The Speaker was totally opposed to it. Anyway, in conference, when we talk about, for example, Brown Hall over in Norfolk, the House put in, I forgot the exact number, but Brown Hall was falling apart really bad. And it was not on the list to be fixed this year, it was on the list to be taken care of next year. And so a few of us got together on the House side and said, look, we got to do something for Brown Hall over at Norfolk State, because it's not fair. The place really is falling down. It's just, it's awful. And so we put the money, we're setting the bonds out on it, and that should be moving this year, not next year, but this year. Want to get it in there and get it out of the way and get it fixed up, so the children over there, not children, but the people who are going over to Norfolk State will have a brand-new Browns Hall. In addition to that, in the capital outlay provisions, we put in 33 projects for construction, and that's around $900 million, which includes Brown Hall. That would be all the colleges across the state that are public universities. There was an argument over public and private funding. As you know, Norfolk State and Virginia State are public institutions, and Hampton Institute is private. So I want to make it clear that the reason the funds were not given to Hampton Institute on the proton beam was because it's a private institute, and not only that, it has the fourth-largest endowment in the state of Virginia. So we felt in good conscience that we're going to pour money into something that ought to be, if it's taxpayers' money, it ought to go into public universities rather than private universities.
Did you cut all the money out for Hampton for that proton beam this time?
That million dollars was cut out. 500 went in.
I was going to say, wasn't it a half a million last year?
Yeah, 500,000, yes, half a million.
The governor put in a million.
Last two years in a row, we let that go through on proton. But the reason for it was because they're a private institution rather than a public. So I just wanted to make that clear, because a lot of people have asked, why didn't you vote for that? And the reason was because it's a private institution. And I'll tell you, Virginia State really needs some money, and I hope we can get on that next year and do what's necessary, because both ODU, Norfolk State, and Virginia State have been sort of stepchildren, and we're trying to bring them back. With regard to other higher education laws, we put in another 600,000 for the military program at Virginia Tech, another 275,000 for the military program at BMI, 600,000 for Virginia military survivors and dependents. That's about an $1,800 increase. I should say, the stipend goes to 1,800. I think it was 1,600 prior to that, and now it's 1,800. And that's for those people that get killed overseas in action. Another 413,000 to the extension programs, which are helping farmers all over the state. Those extension programs are basically tech extension programs. There's another 148,000 for VMS, and that's for the blue crab study. For some reason, every other year, crabs in Virginia are on a downhill, and then they come back. And so the money was put in there to make sure that our seafood industry stays healthy, and so that we'll have that seafood continuing to come in, and Virginia will be one of the leaders in the country with it. We also put in 117,000 for Southwest Virginia Higher Education Center. And that's a center out there where the children would have to either, it's like a two-year college. So we put the extra money in there, so they would have the opportunity to have an education. And as most of you know, there's a program with the community college system, where if you go two years and you keep certain grade level, then you can go to college, state-supported college, at an equivalent rate, rather than paying that extra money. And that's very important, because the cost of education today is really going out of sight. And if younger people can stay home and work two years as a community college system, and then get the extra money to go to college, it's a lot easier. You know, I went to college, when I went to Tech, it was 275 dollars a quarter, and that included my uniform, everything but my shoes. And then when I went to law school at University of Richmond, it was 950 dollars a year. Today, University of Richmond is 48,000 just to walk through the doors. I couldn't have gone to law school. There's no way in the world my parents could afford that. And it's not right. So we're trying to do what we can to try to add more money into these schools, so that children will have the opportunity to go to college. It's not fair. Anyway, the TAG program, for example, is a program where if you go to a private school, because there is no state support whatsoever for the private school, these people are moving from 2,800 per month to 3,100 dollars per month. So it's called the TAG program for those people to go to the private institution. 8.6 million for in-state undergraduate financial aid. If you go to Tech, UVA, William &amp; Mary, James Madison, any state-supported school, we put in an extra 8.6 million dollars to make sure that those students that don't have the money to go can have some money to get them into school and get them started, you know. Can't pay for all of it, but it does pay for a portion of it. We had 5.7 million to eliminate higher education from the 13 million turnover, vacancy reversion into central accounts. And that was a financial thing where we were short of money. It was 13 million dollars out, so we put another 5 million in there to try to pay, make up the difference in the 13 million that had gone out two, three years before. And we're going to try to finish off and pay it all off next year, if possible. We also have 500,000 in workforce equipment to implement the businesses. So there's a grant up to 500,000 if you're going into a business, that you can get from the state. There's certain restrictions to it, don't know what exactly they are, but I do know that the money is there. You got to get the qualifications to pass it, and it'll help you get into the business. And that's what we want. We want more people getting into private enterprise, if possible. We had some allocations that we gave some extra money to. We gave Norfolk State an extra 500,000. We gave ODU 5.2 million to go into their programs. That's what we did for the local people down here, to try to get them up to par with all the other institutions. You got UVA and William &amp; Mary are getting most of the money, and Tech are getting most of the money today. So we're trying to spread that around a little bit, because ODU and Norfolk State have been left back to the back and trying to get that in for them. I can go on with a whole bunch of other programs that we have, but for the time being, we'll get off the money part of it and just talk about, there were some bills that came in... get off the money part of it and just talk about, there were some bills that came in that dealt with, for example, you probably saw it in the paper about driving and texting, Mr. Moody. I just thought I would mention that.
What I'm doing pertains--
Can't do that in the car.
What I'm doing pertains to you.
So anyway, it's a safety program, trying to make sure people don't get hurt in automobiles. And I'm a plaintiff's lawyer, and it's bad when somebody gets run over or hurt because somebody's sitting there texting. And I voted for it, and I know there's some problems with it. There's no question about it. However, I think it's a step in the right direction to try to make it a little bit safe. There were some bills in there dealing with these airplanes that don't have--
Drones.
Drones. I just didn't vote for any of that stuff. I just don't believe that we ought to have private citizens searched without a search warrant. You know, there are a lot of things in that field that--
That didn't pass, did it?
Yeah, yes it did.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, I voted against it, though. I just thought I'd mention it. But anyway, yes, sir.
Well, the counterargument to that was a lot of the, what they were trying to do was restrain it because I agree with Johnny on one side, but there's also a lot of documentation that it's been used on search and rescue missions for little kids that can't. So the question would, do you kill it? Do you not do it? Or do you try to restrict it so that it can only be used for law enforcement and rescue missions where someone, you don't want someone flying over a house looking down for no reason. But if you're looking for a small child, and it's, so that was the argument on the floor. I think that was why it got--
You think they could handle a search warrant and have that type of approval process?
I think you may be going on the right road, Mr. Moody. I think the restrictions that some of the people put on the bill made it more palatable so it can only be used for certain things, but--
But you don't need a search warrant. And the problem, in my opinion, you know, I'm just an old-timer, but I think there's a certain line that you shouldn't cross of privacy. When you allow the feds or any police agency, no offense, but I don't think anybody ought to be flying over your house because sooner or later, it's a creep when you let something get in. Next year, somebody's going to add something to it, and there's going to be another thing added to it, another thing added to it, and say, "Well, you're already doing this." So, you know, it just creeps on. And I think that freedom is a very important part in the American Constitution.
Well, you know, and I agree with that, Google Earth is certainly a step in that direction. You can, you can look in your neighbor's backyard now via Google Earth, which I think that argument occurred before that one was live. But I agree with the drones and, you know--
It's invasion.
It's invasion of privacy. But what I was actually Googling, speaking of electronic means and Texan, was the, you know, last year, because of the suit over the tunnel, we heard a lot about the Public Private Education Act and how everybody wasn't censed over it and how we were going to prevent a similar occurrence. And how did that fare as far as a repeal? Is that dead or is that a life support?
No, nothing has happened on it because May 1st, they're supposed to have the court case. And so it's in the courts right now. And when you have an issue that's before the courts at the present time, you normally don't put a bill in. You've got to find out whether or not it's constitutional or not first and let it go. If, it depends on what happens, then we can amend the legislation following year. But if, if the bill, if the legislation that is in front of us now on the tunnels does not prevail and the suit goes up to the Supreme Court and it's set aside, then you don't have to do anything. There'll have to be some action by the General Assembly to fix it. And it's going to have to be something done to the public-private partnership. A public-private partnership is not bad. It's the way it's being handled, and the governor, in my opinion, doesn't have the right to impose a tax. And I think a tax from the 2008 legislation, when you talk about a fee or a toll, that is a tax. And that's why I think we ought to wait and see what the Supreme Court does with it before we try to approach it in any manner.
So it's still alive pending the outcome of the suit?
And if it's, see, if it's done by the court, the private enterprise loses what money it has in it. If we do it by statute, the state's going to lose it.
Just to put a bow on the drones, I was looking up, the bill that was actually passed places a moratorium on the use of unmanned aircraft by state and local law officials, enforcement, and regulatory entities until July 1, 2015, except in defined emergency situations. So I don't think if you go home, you'll see some drones flying. Just a joke.
I think, well, just about covered most of the information. My concern is when we look at the area like here in Portsmouth, we have very little leveraging. We will not be able to get in or out without having to pay a fee because we are landlocked. And even if we look in terms of the rivers and the tunnels, we're going to have to pay. It seems as if somewhere the communities, we really need to look at that because the economy in this area is not growing with leaps and bounds. So where is the money going to come in to give us the access that we have with our neighboring cities? Because when we look at those, I'm looking at Chesapeake, and the cities on that side, they can span everywhere. We cannot. We are locked in a lot. So what are some of the strategies?
If I could just briefly comment on it, I don't know, but I would assume that eventually the person that really gets hurt is Norfolk and Virginia Beach.
Yes.
Because if those tolls are allowed--
Long-term, they will.
Long-term.
Right.
Short-term, we're going to take a beating.
We're going to get it.
Long-term--
They will.
They will because, and they're not looking at it that way. And I don't know why, but I'm just saying to you--
Better face it.
We're fighting for them too as well as for us. Because, you know, we're divided by this river, and if these tolls are allowed to go on, then you'll have them coming from Hampton over, you'll have them coming from Chesapeake on the, planning on tolls over there. You're not going to be able to get into Norfolk and Virginia Beach without a toll. So down the road, and I figure 10 years from now probably, we will, we should build more west, going to Isle of Wight, Southampton County, all that area, probably grow because people aren't going to pay a buck eighty-nine plus three and a half percent per year increase each way. Trucks are $7.50. How do you get groceries in Norfolk?
You can't get them.
You know, that's $15 a truckload.
That's right.
That's this year. Next year, it goes up three and a half percent, minimum. So, you know, you look at it five years down the road, you're talking about a lot of money.
That's right. Every box.
Yes, sir. Ms. Van, I think that you remember a couple of years ago when this first came up. You know, I think that what the city, what I would think doing, putting on my economic development head is that, you know, if in the event the lawsuit does not work, even if it does, I think we need to, as a city, start to map out a strategic plan--
Right me.
--that shows how we will react to this transportation challenge. Because to me, just an observation, the growth is going to be west. And so we need to redeploy our economic assets and see how can we take advantage of that? How can we, if we have to go into revenue sharing with Northern Suffolk, we have things on the table, start to look at where can we grow? Because at worst case, the tolls will do, and I think this is what Delegate Joanna was saying, at worst taste, the tolls will divide Hampton roads. People will avoid the tolls. You can look at, if you look at the traffic counts that are occurring once a toll is in place and before, you have about a 25% to 30% drop-off in traffic. So there's not going to be a problem with going through the downtown tunnel, it's just going to be fewer cars. And that's going to have a financial impact, but people will move. And people are going to move. So I think in addition to the economic development strategy, connect with the business folks, try to turn it into a sustainable competitive advantage. And the last piece I think we should try to do as a city is to say, quickly get a hold of HRT and say, for those folks who have to commute, what alternatives can they do? Can they do some fast bus routes where people can get on a bus and get to downtown Norfolk? But once they get to downtown Norfolk, where else are they going to go? HRT in the current, if you read the contract, the 120-something pages of it, HRT has a dedicated revenue stream, right?
Two million.
What are they going to do for the citizens of Portsmouth to make their commute easier? And I think that's a valid question that they should answer.
Increase the trips from maybe a half hour to 15 minutes.
But we should be able to look at routes. We should be able to say, what are your route? Can they, can they do a dedic--
Take their means.
For example, can they do a dedicated route for people who go to Norfolk State?
That's right.
Do a loop. Those types of things should be on the table. And even, you know, and because I think the biggest challenge that I see us having going forward is whoever plans out the transportation has to get away from this idea of there, our transportation challenge is moving cars. We need to embrace the urban model in terms of it's moving people. That's what it's got to be about. And maybe we look at increased trolleys or tolls or, not tolls, the ferry.
Furies or whatever.
I mean, we need to start to figure out how we're going to get people because the biggest challenge that I think long-term Virginia Beach and Norfolk are going to have is that for the longest time, the hidden secret is a lot of Portsmouth people work over there.
In those cities. That's right.
And if they've got to pay a toll, they're going to start looking for jobs in other places.
Yep, that's definitely a mindset. Okay, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, absolutely. Appreciate everything you did.
I think them too.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Good luck to y'all.
Thank you.
You got a tough job.
Don't worry, we know how to make that joyful call. We know how to call. That's so sweet. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
President Roslin just passed out, of course, as the paper copy for tonight's presentation on our capital improvements program. Last week, we had an overview of the budget in total with a good focus on the general fund. Our capital improvements plan for 2014, or for the fiscal year 2013, 2014 totals $58.8 million. Oh, okay. By the way, we had a technology issue over here, so bear with us as we coordinate our slide changing. This is the slide that you saw last week. It includes now the information we got from the schools. Tonight, we're going to focus in more on the CIP, which totals $58.8 million. Next slide, please. These are the funding categories, sewer, water. And if we could go back to the previous slide, note the big change between this year, the current year we're in--
Twenty minutes.
--and next year. And that's driven by two things. And both of them are, well, one's utilities, and we'll talk in detail tonight. That's the replacement of our filters at the water treatment plant. We have 16. And as you can imagine, they have been built as the system's demand grew. And so you might have one that is quite old and built without reinforcing steel and one that's a little bit younger, but they're all are old and they need to be replaced. So that's a big project.
All 16 of them?
Well, we're actually going to come down, drop it from 16 to 10, and we'll cover that. The other are, the other reason why we have this big increase is the regulatory stuff we have to do with storm water management as all the communities that are in the Chesapeake Bay drainage area have got to comply with the Clean Water Act. So if we could go to the next slide, that takes that $58 million and puts it into sewer and water, drainage, street employment, improvements, economic development, parks rec, municipal facilities, and you can read the categories. Next slide. Let's look at sewer, and I'm going to ask Brian to come forward. Sewer of that $58 million is 11.1, almost 11.2. And the funding, and this is a format that we're going to show you, we're going to show you the funding source for that particular section. As you can see, this particular component of your CIP is made up of bonds plus cash funding. Remember, I explained last week that we're cash funding to the tune of almost $4.5 billion capital projects with this budget. But this cash is coming out of the utility fund. Brian?
But that's not part of the $4.5 million.
Well, it's, it's coming from the utility fund, and we'll cover that. That's a good question.
So like Mr. Rose said, our sewer piece is a little over $11 million. Deborah, can you do the next slide? We basically have three main categories. In the utilities CIP, what we tend, you'll tend to see is we have more categorical projects from a system improvement perspective rather than specific, it's for this street or this location because we have so many projects of varying size and scope. But basically, we divide it into three areas. We have our miscellaneous citywide improvements. These could be anything from minor projects, rehabilitating pump stations, lining, or replacing sections of sewer lines that are failing and things of that nature. Our biggest expense on the sewer side is this next one, which is our sanitary sewer overflow elimination program, which of course, that's the consent order. Most of you that have been on council for a while know we've been under a consent order for the last several years, as have all of the localities within Hampton Roads, including the Hampton Roads sanitation district. And this is to eliminate overflows when it rains. Basically, we have an old system, as you know, and whenever it rains with leaky pipes, we have a lot of that infiltration of the rainwater. And at times, when you have a tremendous amount of rain, when we have hurricanes and storms and so forth, you will have overflows, as do all the localities, as does HRSD. And so we're under a consent order to correct that. Where we are in that process, we've gone through lots of evaluation, we've done smoke testing, we've done CCTV of all the lines, and we're in the process of developing our rehabilitation plan. This is going to be a 20-to-30-year process, and so we're going to be, this 6.9 is just the start, and it'll be that order of magnitude upwards of eight to 10 million a year is what the estimate is of what we're going to envision with sewer improvements. And so this is to get us started with that first piece of the puzzle on the consent order compliance.
How long has the consent order been in place, Brian?
It's been in place, it's before I got here, I want to say since about '04, '05, but I need to look that up, I'm not exactly certain. But it's been, it's been in place for several years. And like I said, it's all the, all the localities are having to comply. Now, if you recall, one, one piece of this, if you recall about a, almost, not quite a year ago, we came to council, all the councils in the region approved a resolution to do a study. to do a study with, through the PDC about looking at what's the, what's the possibility of regionalizing the sewer systems, consolidating, is there any benefit to doing that? And that was driven in part by the consent order process, to see if it was more economical to, to deal with consent order on that basis, and also from an operation standpoint. Because if you think about it, our sewer is sort of halfway a regional system. The collection piece is done individually by localities, but all the treatment is done regionally by HRSD. So the thought is, what if we just regionalized everything? So that's in a study phase. You'll be hearing more about that in a few months when that's complete. And the, the resolution that you pass and all the localities pass is not binding. It just says, hey, well, well, let's take a look at it, see what the results say. And then, and then, once we get those results back, then council, all the councils and boards in the region will be deliberating that. So this could possibly change, depending on the outcome of that study. But right now, we have to continue moving forward.
Explain this, the sewer overflow. You got a reservoir. It what range? It spews over into lakes? What, what are we trying to mitigate here? When you say the overflow?
Any overflow from a manhole, for example, let's say that we have a rain event that overcomes our storm sewer system, and it may be interconnection too. And so when that water starts bubbling out of the manhole-
That's backing up though. I was thinking overflow. You're talking both.
That's, that's an overflow.
Okay. Oh, okay.
It overflows the system and goes into the-
Right.
Yeah. It's a discharge. We got to report that. If we don't report that-
Right. You get fined.
We get fined.
That's right. I got you. All right. Thank you.
And it's not unique to Port. It's not just a Port.
Yeah, I understand. Right.
The third piece is category arcade and repair. This is when we have a collapsed line. You know, we have, again, you know, when I was here just a few weeks ago, talking about downtown project, 100-year-old system or more, a lot of these pipes, especially the terracotta pipes, that you'll have a collapse. And usually where you see that, you'll see a depression in the street, a pothole, you know, will develop. And so we've got to go in and repair that section, usually, you know, cut that section out, and then we will try and line it from manhole to manhole if we can. So depending on the extent of that, it's on how much of a repair needs to be made. But that's, that component on the sewer system. So those are the three main categories on the sewer side. So if we could go to the next one. On the water side, it's a little bit more, about 23 million proposed for FY14. Most of that is bonds, but as you can see, there is that cash portion. And so utilities has historically been able to cash fund a portion of our CIP. But of course, our projects tend to be a lot more expensive, unfortunately. So we can't cash fund the whole thing, but we are able to cash fund portions of it. So-
And so what we're using is almost 2 point-
2.8.
2.8. Yeah, 2.8. I was doing the math real quick. He's faster than me. On utility fund cash. So we've got 4.5 in the general fund for general fund capital projects, and 2.8 on the utility fund for cash funded projects on the utility CIP.
Okay. The next one. Okay. So we have, on the water side, we have a lot, a lot more going on here in the near future. Just a little bit of a background, you know, our, our water treatment facility is actually located in the city of Suffolk. We have several dams that form, we have four lakes that form our lake system. That's our water supply. So the water is treated in Suffolk, and it is pumped approximately 18 to 20 miles over to Portsmouth and throughout our distribution system. It dates back, again, to the 1890s. So we, it's an old system. And besides serving the city of Portsmouth, we have contracts with Chesapeake and with Suffolk. We sell them bulk water. So those are also customers of ours. And they're currently, they're about a third of our annual, average daily production is sold to Chesapeake and Suffolk.
Why don't we take a moment here and put the light on and let Brian show you the system? And this may help frame up your questions too. Yes, sir?
What type of money are we, funds that Chesapeake and Suffolk, or Norfolk and Suffolk are paying?
Chesapeake and, and, and we have contracts with Chesapeake and Suffolk. They're what's called bulk water contracts. The contracts, the water rate is negotiated. And they buy wholesale from us and then retail it to their customers. So we have the municipalities as the water customer primarily. Those rates increase when our water rates go up. And we thought it would be useful to, to show you the system. This is downtown Suffolk, and that's at the far end is Portsmouth. This is going through the swamp, and this is going out towards 17. And it will be good for you, all those dams that Brian talked about are on the west side of the water treatment plant. And so to put this in context, why don't you show how we get the water from there to here?
Sure. So the treatment plant, again, is in downtown Suffolk. It's across the street from Lipton Tea, if you know where the Lipton plant is. Here are our lakes. This is Kahoon. Up here, it feeds into Lake Mead. Then you have Kilby on the other side, and then Spates run up here, sort of like a horseshoe shape, as our four lakes system. And so, once it leaves the treatment plant, it's going one of two places. It's going through our low pressure system, which is actually three mains in parallel that come and then basically go through downtown Suffolk and then eventually run generally along the US 58 corridor through the dismal swamp, and then all the way to our Frederick Boulevard pump station. So the tanks that you see right up next to the interstate on Frederick Boulevard, that's where it's going. And then it's repumped into our distribution system, basically serving all of the downtown, what we refer to as the downtown area. Then the other, the other piece is a high-pressure system. Suffolk actually takes its water from us right at the plant, out of that system. And then the rest of it goes along Willroy Road, Nanceman Parkway. It's two separate lines. They eventually converge into a single line, and it comes all the way up into Churchland to the tank there on Cedar, Cedar Road.
And they actually go across country. If you're familiar with just South of Drivers, a subdivision in the swamp called Windeland Forest, it goes right through there. So as it goes to make its way to Route 337, Portsmouth Boulevard, and 17, it's actually going across country.
So Suffolk takes its water at the plant. Chesapeake actually takes it in several places. They have, we have several metered locations. The two main points are here in Bowers Hill, actually where they have their treatment facility. They take some there. But the bulk of it that serves their western branch is over here on Gum Road, behind the Chesapeake Square Mall. So it's where they take it.
How old did you say this piping is?
The, the, the low-pressure mains are the oldest, dates to the late 1800s. Sections of it, yeah.
Is there a life expectancy on-
It's, it's past. It's life expectancy.
So are we ahead of the game in trying to make sure that we don't wait-
That is a great question.
Very good question.
We have, that, that's one of our projects.
Very good question.
So-
Danny's helping.
The contracts with Suffolk and Norfolk, are they long-term contracts? Can they bow outside of us?
It's Chesapeake and Suffolk. Chesapeake's contract currently runs through 2026, and Suffolk runs through 2040. So there, there are, at this point, I would say a medium-length term, because they were done, originally done in the 90s.
But they are large consumers.
But, right. They're, so, so, and there, and there was called take-or-pay contracts, meaning they're guaranteed and required to take a certain amount quantity-wise. Whether or not they take it, they pay us the value of that quantity. So it's metered consumption, and then we do a reconciliation at the end, in, on a calendar year basis. So every January, we reconcile their consumption of the previous calendar year, and then we balance bill them. Should they not actually consume what they're contractually required, we balance bill them for the difference.
And let's talk about our demand. Why don't you tell in round numbers what our demand is, and then Chesapeake and Suffolk?
Yeah. Our average demand, our average production last year was about 17 and a half million gallons per day on average. Of that 17 and a half, 6 and a half goes to Suffolk and to Chesapeake. 2 and a half to Suffolk, 4 to Chesapeake. So roughly a third of our daily production is sold to Suffolk and to Chesapeake. So, and, and our plant, our, our, our system rated capacity is 33 MGD. So we're only about half production of what we could produce from, from a production site standpoint.
Now, this is a beverage company, just like Coca-Cola. We produce a beverage to drink. And Coca-Cola is very concerned about how much of the beverage gets spilled on the floor, and they can't account for it, and can't sell it. And so one of the challenges of having an old system, we know how much water we can produce per day.
Which is at the other end.
And then we know how much we bill for.
At the other end.
Then the question is, why the difference? If you're, if you're billing, if you're producing at X, and you're only billing it X minus 10, where'd the minus 10 go? And it could be a lot of things. It could be leaks along the transmission mains. It could be leaks in the distribution system. It could be that our meters are off, and so, or even our meter reading. It's a hot day. It's 104 degrees, and you're meeting, you're at your 267th meter that you're reading that day. You might make a mistake. And that's why it's important for us to automate this metering. What we want to do is, if we produce X millions of gallons, we want to sell X millions of gallons. We don't want it to leak into the swamp and in Windeland Forest or along 58 or 337 or wherever.
What is our difference now, percentage-wise?
I don't have that number handy. I mean, we, it's, I'll have to get that to you. I don't, I don't have that handy.
Has the Lake Gaston Pipeline source, has that taken any water business from us?
Uh, no. It hasn't. That, that pipe discharges about at Windsor. There's a, there's a dip in 58 right past the food line on the east side, and that's where it dumps in. And then it feeds into the Norfolk Lakes. And it's Norfolk that gets that water to sell it to Virginia Beach.
I thought they were selling it to some of Chesapeake as well, some of our customers, former customers. Is that-
Chesapeake has an allotment of, they, they partnered, they have an allotment of that water from Lake Gaston.
Remember when that deal came together, the beach looked for allies, because they were looking for allies, not, more for the politics of it, because they were going to do battle with North Carolina, with the Army Corps of Engineers, the whole question of inter-basin transfer of water. And so back in the 80s, when they said, we're going to Gaston, that was a unilateral decision, they went around and said, how much do you want Chesapeake? How much do you want Suffolk? How much do you want Alawite? And a lot of communities signed up. The question is, how much water are they taking? And that's, that's a good question. I don't know that answer.
The reason why I mention that, I believe at one time, there was an agreement between Portsmouth and Norfolk, where Norfolk wouldn't sell-
Your water.
-west of the Elizabeth River.
Well, they're not selling, they're not selling finished water. And that's the, that's the, that's the issue. That's the issue that they've got. We're, we're on the right side of the equation. Our treatment plant is at this end, so we can pick up water customers along the way. Norfolk's water treatment plant is not here, even though their lakes are here. It's in Norfolk. And so the best they can do is sell bulk raw water. And that's a cheap price. I mean, the expense is in the-
The tree process, right.
Processing.
That's where your money goes.
The 16 filters that we were talking about earlier, we dropped it down to 10. When was the last time they were replaced?
Uh, well, the, the media gets replaced, but we're actually talking about a comprehensive, actually new structures and everything. The media gets replaced periodically, but, but-
Media. You're talking about cartridges.
And why don't we take a moment just to talk about what these things, think about it as a big funnel, okay? And in this funnel is layers of different types of material. And the process is to put the water in at the top and let it go through the bottom, and it, that media filters that stuff out. And it takes out some very small microscopic stuff. And it can be different materials, change in that media. And these-
How deep are the?
They're pretty deep. They're, they're taller than me. They're twice as tall. And I'm a tall guy.
But you know-
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
And so we got 16 of those. And those, that, that media gets dirty, even though you, you backwash them, you reverse the flow of the water and skim, skim off the scum. You have to replace it every once in a while. But we're at that point where we have, we actually have our, our old structure for the, for the filter is made up of concrete only and not concrete and rebar. And so they, yeah. This is a $25 million project. We're taking it down from 16 to 10. It's going to take three years to do. And again, we wouldn't need 10 filters just for our demand. So part of the bulk water rate that we have for Chesapeake and Suffolk, built into that rate is the allowance for capital and capital replacement.
That's why I asked, how long is their contract? How much water do they use? See where we can get it.
And we're already internally thinking about strategies to, to increase the length of those contracts. And I can tell you-
As far as the filter, going from 10, 16 down to 10, are these new filters that much more efficient, that you can run more water through? You don't need those additional six?
Right. They're, well, they're, they're, they're larger. They're deeper. And so they'll have a larger-
Capacity.
Capacity. And if, if I may, if I, I think I can answer your questions if I let it go through, because it's on the, on the-
The next one.
Next slide. If you remember one thing, there is a strategic value to having this water system. We're a region of the haves and the have-nots. We talked about the fact that Chesapeake and Suffolk have the land. Well, we got water. And Suffolk's going to have a very difficult time getting water out for 460. And look where our lines are.
We need to take care of our investment.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
We do. All right. Lights and next slide.
Before we move to the next slide, just real quickly. So these are, of course, you know about our dam upgrades. That's, that's continuing this. And downtown master utility plan, we're in phase one. That will continue. The infrastructure improvement line, you know, we're talking about citywide replacement water lines. What this line does is, for example, when public works, like say for the project they're doing in Brighton right now, those neighborhood projects, while they're doing those neighborhood projects, doing curb and gutter and things, drainage and things like that, we go ahead and replace our infrastructure at the same time. So we only disturb the neighborhood one time. So it's, it's projects like that that come out of, out of this line.
And let me also dwell on this for a second. Brian told you that most of the feed for downtown comes out of the two tanks at Frederick. And they're big tanks. So we got a lot of water there. The problem is getting the water from those tanks here, so that we have sufficient fire flow in, in where we're standing. And that's part of the concern, as we look for all this development that we really would want to take place. The problem exists on getting the water for the fire flows between those tanks and here. So as this project is going in, it's not just replacing an old line. It's replacing that old line with a larger line.
Okay.
But John, along with that, one of the things that we've learned through the projects that the students did in the water line, tracing that all the way through, they were able to get some valuable- able to get some valuable information during their science, technology research that enhanced the way we were filtering water through. So we had some young people that showed some of the way, I'm a young lady, so I can remember when they did, you know, some of the things, and it did make a difference. My son came through that process.
So here's where we're talking about the, the filter replacement project. Like we mentioned earlier, it's a thirty-three MGD plant. We have sixteen filters. They were built in, in three stages. The oldest filters, uh, filters one through four, are our largest filters, but they date to the nineteen-forties. And that's about a third of our production is just in those four filters. And that's where we're having problems with the age, leaking, deterioration, there's been some settlement. And then the other, other filters came online in the, in the sixties, and then the, the last set was the early eighties. So it's been sort of done in phases. So it's not as efficient as it could be, because you have different control systems, different pumps, those kind of things, in order to make that work.
I have really argued with, with Brian that being born like those filters in the nineteen-forties is not that old.
And you're really tall.
And I'm really tall. Those filters, seriously, are about two stories high. I mean, you have to go down, they're big, they're big guys.
So the, so we're, we're going to replace those sixteen with ten deep bed filters with, of course, so that'll have the latest technology, they'll be much more efficient, they'll have better backwashing capability. So, and the other thing that they're going to do is, is, the other reason for this project, besides the maintenance and just the end of useful life and, and the normal replacement of infrastructure, is that we are heavily regulated by EPA and the State Health Department through the Safe Drinking Water Act. And so they're constantly, and, and, and we're, we're, in order to meet the new regulations coming down the pipe, as far as reduction of contaminant levels and, and new emerging contaminants that are coming out, and being able to meet those, that's why, that's the other driving factor, in, in terms of why we are working to replace the filters.
So this will improve the water quality?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a work.
For the end user?
Yes.
Let me ask you, as you take these filters offline to replace them, what'd you do? One or two at a time, three or four? My question is, the rest of them online will have the capacity to still handle what we need on a daily basis, or...
Yes, actually, what, the way...
How many will you take offline?
Well, well, actually, what's going to happen is, we're going to, in essence, replace all of them, we're going to basically build an entire new filter structure, and build all ten, and bring, and, and, and bring them all online, and then take them, and then take the rest offline. That's, 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 that's the, the plan.
So you're eliminating six completely.
Right. And keep in mind, those six, they're not, they're, they're, they're different sizes, different capacities, different, yeah, so, but the ten, the, the ten that we're going to have are going to be uniform, and so we will have, you know, again, better capacity, better throughput, you know, and it will work much better, much more efficient for us.
That whole piece is fifteen million dollars and will be done in three years.
No, sir.
No, no, the fifteen million is just, this is going to be over three years. This is just the first part. It's in design now, and we will go out to bid in the next fiscal year and get started in the next fiscal year, but the project's going to span three fiscal years, probably take about twenty-four months total construction time, but it's going to span three fiscal years. And we're, and the current estimate right now, of course, they're still in design, we're still in the early parts of design, but the, right now, it's a ballpark, it's twenty-five, between twenty-five and thirty million dollars is what we're expecting that, that project to cost. But again, that's, that's going to last us for generations, you know, once that, once that's put in place. Because we're replacing certain filters that have been in service close, you know, seventy-plus years.
How long does it take us to get our money back out of that? You run those numbers yet?
Let's get ready to ask the same thing.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's hard to say, because it's a, that's a function of demand. And so if we have more increased demand, of course...
Well, based on our current demand.
Based on, yeah.
Yeah, just find out, that'd be interesting enough. We're going to spend twenty to thirty million dollars, how long it'll take us to get that back? Okay, you can continue.
I got it.
Um, so that's on the, the filter project. Ms. Lanis, what, what, that's just for, that's just for our minor, minor repairs, things that, smaller scale things, valves, or small sections of line that require attention. This last piece, the low-pressure transmission mains, this is, goes back to the schematic I showed you here. When we started, we focused on the low, the low pressure, this is our oldest piece, and some of it's a hundred years old or more. And so when we started this project, you know, it was the focus on low-pressure.
Is that why it's low-pressure, the pipe's so old, we're scared we'll blow it all the hell?
It's just how we operated. We just operated at a lower pressure, about twenty PSI. It's, it's not, it has nothing to do with the pipe, it's just how, how it's always historically been operated. And so what, we, we, when we, we've gone to look at this, and to Councilman Edmonds, you know, are we trying to be proactive? And we are, but we, we said, you know, we need to look at the entire transmission system. So even though this is relatively younger, this, you know, this is still, you know, nineteen-seventies, still has useful life, but let's look at, take a holistic approach of what we're doing as far as from a transmission perspective. And so we are in that study phase right now. We won't, we still have several months to go before we get those results back with recommendations about what kinds of enhancements, whether it's replacement, repair, more interconnectivity between the two, storage capacity, the whole works as far as what we need to do from a transmission and distribution perspective to make our system much more efficient and improve, and reduce risk and increase reliability, so...
But perfect world, do you want to replace the whole line if you, if...
You got sixteen million dollars.
Well, we, we don't know. I mean, part of it is, you know, and, and we didn't set any parameter, intentionally, we didn't set parameters. We didn't tell the, the, our consultant, "Well, this is what we want," or "This is our ideas of what we think we need." It's more of a, a blank slate, say, "This is what we have, what is the best," you know, and, and looking at where our demand centers, where our largest customers are, where do we need to move water to? Where's Suffolk, they're a customer, where at Chesapeake? All of those pieces, and what's important, we have three lines here. Do we need three lines here? Do, you know, and, you know, it, it, the simple answer is, we'll just replace the three that we have with new lines, and they'll last us another hundred years, but that might not be the best scenario, or the best solution for what it is that we need in terms of what today's demands are, where we foresee that going in the future. So we asked them to be more holistic in looking at it, how we can, and look at the entire system, so that's what they're doing. This, the million dollars...
You got a consultant doing that?
That's correct. And, and what we put in for the, for next fiscal year is, we're going to get those results back, and then we're going to not start needing to do design work. And this will, whatever, whatever comes of this will be in phases, and will probably be multiple projects. It's not going to be just a single, "Let's run a twenty, new twenty-mile pipe from point A to point B." And so that's, but, but this is one that you'll continue to see in future CIPs, as far as additional funding going towards that, depending on what the outcome is of, of our evaluation, where we need to go.
So John, with all of this, looking at what you just presented here, there's no need to increase our rates to be able to capture some of this cost?
Not this year.
Not this year?
Okay.
And Chesapeake doesn't own any water?
They do.
They do. They have a water treatment plant on the Northwest River that's plagued by desalinization problems. They built a new filtration plant on fifty-eight.
On fifty-eight, actually between, between our plant and Portsmouth, right by the, the airport, fifty-eight, on the right-hand side, going west.
Yet they still buy water from us and from all...
Correct. Correct.
And then Suffolk has two plants, they have a conventional filtration plant and a desalinization plant. All right, let's go on, next slide. Drainage and street improvements, James. As you can see, total five point six, and this is all funded this way.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. These are our drainage and street improvements, CIP. ADA compliance, curb cuts, an ongoing program where citizens can call in and request a handicap ramp. They typically call in to our Plut Works Department. For the twenty-five thousand dollars, you get between fifteen and sixteen ramps per year. The bridge repairs is a continuation. Every year we inspect our bridges, determine if there are any repairs needed. Typically, they're concrete repairs to, to the decking, pier caps, pier columns, bar rails, things of that nature.
That's right. Where are we on the Churchland Bridge?
On the Churchland Bridge? That's in an upcoming slide, so if you just sit tight for a little bit.
Next to you.
Okay.
I'll go cross the freaker, I need to know.
Wash your fingers when you go.
The bottom, the bottom number is for our ongoing H-CIP project, Highway Safety Improvement Program. We have currently a contract to do ten intersections. That's scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. That's federal money, so it's totally reimbursable. This amount here should cover potential contingencies, so if we have to pay it out, we'll get it back.
Now, I was reading where the feds have cut back on some of that money. Are we going to be impacted?
That is a different funding source, that is C-MAD projects and RSTP funds. There's a meeting at the TPO on the nineteenth, where there'll be a discussion, should I say fight? Or ready to determine which projects get cut, which projects continue to be funded. Our current project that, that has that type of funding is actually at the, I want to say one hundred percent, one hundred percent design stage, it's in VDOT's hands, from my understanding. Projects at that level are least likely to have funding pull, because they're so far along, but we'll see on the nineteenth for sure. Excellent, please. This gets into our larger, our storm, projects that are funded by our Stormwater Utility. Our main, our main item here is the drainage and facilities repair, and that's for our ongoing system maintenance. We spend anywhere between two-point-five and three million dollars per year on routine maintenance, such as cave-ins, storm drain rehab, which covers your pipe cleaning, your CCTV inspection, and your lining. There's also ditch maintenance and small projects, such as replacing the culvert under Dale's, Dale's Hall or parking lot. Currently, there is a project with Plut Works where they're replacing the culvert underneath Roosevelt that connects Warfield Canal to Crystal Lake Drive, to the Crystal Lake, to Crystal Lake, and they're also scheduling to replace, actually, the culvert underneath that connects Crystal Lake, right there. So these are types of projects that get funded out of that line. You see the small amount here for dredging of stormwater management facilities, address water quality, and, and also water depth. These retrofits of stormwater facilities have actually become one of our major strategies as we move forward in addressing some of our TMDL concerns.
I got a question. You say you're going to be replacing something in the Crystal Lake area?
Yes, sir. The, there's an arch culvert that, that Crystal Lake's, Kevlar Manor's here, I forget the neighborhood, you can help me out.
Crystal Lake Drive?
Crystal Lake Drive, underneath Crystal Lake Drive, there's a, there's a metal arch, and it's, and it's got some, some failures in it. Plut Works has got, got the design out and got a contractor online, but they bid the project out, and they have a contractor ready to replace that. It's going to be replaced with, I think, two, two-sixty-inch concrete culverts. It's going to be bedded, so you don't have to worry about the road selling. If you go out there now, you can see certain places where they've patched, because what's happening is the arch is starting to, starting to spin and kick out, and so we don't want that to give way.
Would that cut off the street?
Well, during construction, yes. So they'll, they'll, they'll start notifying residents and, and post-detour routes and things like that, and they have contact with the residents to let them know ways in and out, project durations, things of that nature, with the projects getting closer to construction.
You dug that out. Two-sixty.
This line item here is for compliance with our stormwater permit. You see a couple of items here for water quality monitoring, public education, BNP inspections, some other things, our development of stormwater maintenance plans for operations facilities, permit renewal, and an update of our existing stormwater plan, developing the new state stormwater ordinance that fits Portsmouth, and an, and an overview and review of our existing ordinance to make sure they comply with the new ordinance that we have to adopt, as well as training and workshops for staff, and any other type of developers that, that need to be up to speed on these new stormwater regulations. This bottom slide there, we're not asking for any funding this year for replacement of the Churchland Bridge. That's a twenty-nine-point-five million dollar project. We have revenue sharing for the design. The design is, the preliminary design is complete, majority of the environmental is complete. We're actually have a revenue application in, to the state that we should hear back, hopefully this month, for the right-of-way portion of that project.
So, so how much money you think we're going, we're anticipating from this year?
Well, we received one-point-two-five million for design. We're asking for another one million for right-of-way. And then as we move forward and get closer to construction, we're positioning ourselves so we can ask for money from both the state and the feds for, for construction dollars. So at this time, I'm, I'm unsure, but we are positioning ourselves to be able to request that fund.
This becomes a candidate for that extra money that's going to come out of the new transportation legislation. And it's already in the TPO, the transportation...
It's already in the list of priorities for the TPO.
This is in their six-year plan.
Now, right of...
That could be, that could get very political once.
Is that the three million dollars you asked them earlier?
Well, you know, that's not, that's not, that's nowhere near, that's your...
Not at this point.
Well, the problem is, is the funding that's coming, even though like Delegate James said, it's, it's a start, but it's nowhere near what we need region-wide, and so what you're going to wind up with is all of us in that room fighting each other for the few dollars that are there, and you know what that means for us.
The nice thing is that we don't need the construction dollars right now, because it's still under design. And we're looking at alternatives, for example, how do you span that?
When will we need the money? Another year out, or two years out? How many years out?
Construction is scheduled for twenty-sixteen.
Twenty-sixteen?
Twenty-sixteen.
That's next year, CIP.
Now, you, you mentioned money for right-of-way. Is the, the new westbound going to be in a different footprint?
It's going to be wider, because we have to meet federal requirements as far as clear space and multi-use paths, and so it's going to be wider. As far as the lane, the travel lanes will be the same, but some of the clear space features of the bridge will be different, so it'll be wider than the existing bridge.
So, so is it...
So, so High Street West, or Route Seventeen, whatever you want to call it, is, that's not going to have to be widened to accommodate it?
Think about the foot of the bridge, visualize going west, as you leave land, it's that, that area right there, and then on the, the other land side, the west side of the western branch.
It's, the approach is on either side of the bridge, but it's about twenty-five properties.
Okay.
So twenty-sixteen, we're going to need that thirty million dollars.
We're at a little bit of an advantage, because we've already saved funding from the state for other parts of the project, so that gives us a little bit of a leg up.
And like John said, it's already listed in the TPO list, so it's there, and I think, let's hope that list is static, because there's several things in there, but ours is somewhere near the top of that list, so, and I think that's one of the few projects we've even got on the whole list.
We've only got a couple.
Yeah, if you go through the whole list for the region, this one and maybe one other small item, so we would hope that...
This is the biggest.
Does the fact that we're a four matter, does that help us any with the, like, the regional list? Like, compared to like the Lesno Bridge, or the...
That's all on that same list.
They got a, they're prioritizing that list, the mayor's talking about.
I'll get a copy to everybody, we've got, they just put that out. We'll get a copy and make sure everybody has it. We'll highlight where ours is, so you don't get lost on it.
You're right.
Yeah, say that.
Yeah, they identified that bridge and that water crossing as being regionally significant, so...
Right. Okay.
All right, economic development. This is essentially funding the gateways. And this is what? Brad, you want to speak to that real quick?
Real quick, it's very similar to what we talked with you about with Frederick Boulevard Carter, the creation of those gateways, landscaping and funding for those projects to continue at other gateways throughout the city.
Where is this one at? You got a target yet, or just putting money in as a place?
Putting money in, and it may be the continuation as we talked about.
Coming up to the interstate?
Coming up to the interstate or another phase of that, yes, sir.
Parks and Recreation. Margaret, we have $325,000, and she'll give you an overview of what this is for. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Basically, what we have is $75,000 designated for our continuously outdoor lighting project. We have two other fields to put outdoor lightings on, which is the Craddock Field and the Holland Biltmore Field. The Holland Biltmore Field lights are extremely old, and we have gone to a system, which we have on Douglas Park, where it's computerized. It can be turned on and off, and it can be controlled that way, as opposed to the old key system where somebody can go in and just pick it open and turn them on and use them at their will. And then, of course, our outdoor facility, which covers our Churchland Little League fence replacing and our number four softball field fence replacing, and renovation of tennis courts for Wilson High, Churchland Park, and City Park and Cavalier Manor. And that's to cover resurfacing, fencing replacement, and lighting replacement. And those are, pretty much, you all have been through the city a lot, those things are just old. They've started to split.
That seems awful cheap, Margaret, because when we got the price for just the Cavalier Manor one, it was almost $100,000. To refinish those tennis courts, fix that fence that's broken down, and I think somebody ran a truck in the side of it or something. But it was almost $100,000 just to do that one part, and you mentioned how many Cavalier Manor?
A lot of these are just phases, yes. It's Wilson, Churchland, and Cavalier Manor, and City Park. Yes, and Churchland.
So you're phasing each one, so that's not the total number, so you're doing all of them?
And city, right now, the most used ones are the ones that are the Wilson and the Churchland fields.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to get ahead of you, but is there any way in view where we can look at some recreation facility in areas where we need them pretty bad, such as the Truxton area and the Churchland area?
Yes, sir. In fact, we've got an ongoing study of that internally. That's a conversation that we started back in December.
Well, we had a study, we paid for a study last year.
We did.
Well, we're not studying it with a consultant. We're looking at the information that we got from that.
In-house, yes, in-house.
And looking at, you know, what's available. And honestly, we've got, we've got schools that, and David's sitting here, he may, this might light a rocket, but every school's in a neighborhood, and your elementary schools have gymnasiums. And this is a perfect use to marry up a neighborhood recreational need with a facility that is there.
I think that study, if I remember correctly, said the major deficiency was in the Churchland area.
Yes.
But to answer your question, yes, we're working.
Can we, John, can you reissue that study? I think we have some new members that probably haven't seen that study.
What that study didn't do was put a price tag beside the items that listed, like Bill said, Churchland.
The demands.
And fixing up some of the existing facilities, but didn't get any prices on it.
Not a time line either.
Yeah, but the biggest thing it also didn't do, and we asked the question, did you go and take a needs assessment from each community where kids are and whether or not we had adequate facilities? And the answer was no. So they did an assessment on what we had, not what we need. Your question is more related to what we need.
And that's what we're doing internally.
That's what we're doing.
Exactly.
Because there's a difference in what we need and the people you're serving versus what we have and what we need to prepare.
And that's exactly what we're doing.
Right, okay.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, and the final thing, which is a one-time project, is the Paradise Creek Maintenance, and to get that park ready. It has different phases, and we're looking at that being one of our premier parks when, by the time we're done, we have canoe and kayak launching and some outdoor programming. So it's a one-time thing to purchase some supplies to be able to operate that.
Supplies or equipment?
Equipment, equipment, yes.
That's supplies.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, equipment.
All right, next slide. Dennis?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Municipal facilities is broken down. There's going to be a lot of players in this piece. We've got several different projects, and I think municipal facilities may just be a catch-all for some of those projects. But it's funded in three separate ways. First is general obligation bonds at 14 million, the Harbor Center ticket sales of 50,000. Now, the Harbor Center ticket sales is a dollar that's added for each ticket that's sold over the $15 value, and that goes into a pot. And the reason it's in the capital budget is so that it can carry over. If we have a larger project that we want to do, we can take $25,000 from this year and carry it over. It was in the operating budget, that wouldn't be possible. So that's an estimate, the 50,000 is an estimate on the number of tickets we've sold historically. The general fund cash is 2.56 million, and that was what you've already seen in Mr. Rhodes' presentation.
Next slide, and I'm going to ask James to speak to this first bullet.
Okay, that top dollar figure is just under $1 million that we need to bring the total funds needed for the new BHS building up to the engineering estimate, which is eight and a half million dollars. It's currently under design. We've been working with the BHS staff and our consultant, HPA, along that process. Those funds will include the demolition of the existing Sears garage, the new building, and all its, everything that comes with that, furniture, security, technology, and all that.
So this million completes the total ask of what we need of what, eight and a half million?
Eight and a half, that's the engineering estimate.
Excuse me, what happened, it reminds me, there was RFP that went out on that for design, and I know there was some heartburn from some of the players, responders. Where does that stand? Does that have to go back out?
No, sir. We're currently under design.
We're under design?
No, that was after construction. He pulled that.
Yeah, this was the construction.
It was pulled.
This was a designed build, it sounds like. I'll check into that, but I wasn't aware of that.
This design is ongoing, and we're planning to bid this out, sorry.
Go ahead.
And we're planning to bid this out in the June, July timeframe, planning on a nine-month construction, so to have this facility ready next summer for Bill Park's folks to move in.
This is a traditional project where you design it, and then you bid it, and you build it, and it's on a fast track, as far as I'm concerned. We've gone too, too long.
Yes.
With that being, that shabby facility is not the way to describe it. And so the goal is to get this built on a fast track. We met this morning, and I want to make sure that everybody is, understands the speed, and we want to, give the timeline for this.
Yeah, currently, we're under design. We plan to, like I mentioned just a few minutes ago, bid this out in the June, July timeframe.
This summer.
You know, I'm confused about the funding, because this money, this is, this fund, the money to pay for this was kind of put into a fund, and I don't know if forgotten is the proper word, but it was overlooked.
I'm not sure overlooked is the word I would use.
What word would you use?
Neglected. What happened was the city issued GEO bonds. And with GEO bonds, there are federal guidelines, not guidelines, but regulations, you've got to be under construction within two years. Otherwise, the feds think that you're using the funds for arbitrage, that you take the bond proceeds and invest them in order to get a good interest return. And so the city had some explaining to do. Those bonds are quite old. They were issued probably eight years ago.
You're right.
Eight or nine years ago. And so they, they're there. I mean, you can look in the cash drawer and see them. We need to get this project done. We need to get it built. Now, this will take care of everything that's on High Street. The offices that BHS has on Port Center will stay there, and that's always been the plan. That's been the plan for more than 10 years, to stay there. This gets everything, though, that's at High and Washington, off that site and on the campus of the Health Department and Social Services, where it should be.
Why wouldn't we want all of them on?
You want everything.
Why wouldn't we move everything?
Everything.
I was not with the city when that decision was made years ago. It was before you came on council, is my understanding, this more than a 10-year-old decision, which they, pardon me? I mean, it's...
Yeah, but we're paying a fortune over here, John, off of Port Center, and the idea is if we're going to invest and build facilities like this, we need to bring all that stuff together.
And look at the whole picture.
To keep that piece over there on Port Center. I'm sure Port Center is more expensive than everything else you're trying to combine, isn't it?
If you guys want to look at that, and that's great, we can do a...
I think we should.
I mean, object is costly. I mean, we want to bring all this stuff on the one roof, and that, just like our police and fire, it's the same thing there.
I think that that decision probably predates anybody that's on council, because it's really that old.
Yeah, because I wouldn't have wanted to move half of them.
But we need to do a realistic timeline.
Intellectual disability.
Dave Powers Building, I think that's the one.
That's right, a realistic timeline.
We got it, that's fine. I mean, that, this is good feedback.
Yeah.
We'll come up with what the additional cost might be, and yeah, now's the time to do it.
Because we have, so we have this money, so you're just going, it's just a matter of figuring out the square footage you need for what's on.
And seeing what we can do as far as funding, what that delta is, the difference between what we got and what that additional cost will be.
We're going to continue to move ahead with...
Absolutely.
Ten years ago, but 10 years ago is a long time.
Sir?
Oh, I said, you know, 10 years has passed, and, you know, that situation has changed.
That's why you can't procrastinate on these things that long, because the whole model's changed.
It's my understanding that that decision was made even possibly before the turn of this century. I mean, it's been that far in the back.
I can understand our haste and all, but I look at the number of years it took for us to get the schools to the point that they are now, and we had to do it on a systematic approach to make sure we got it to the point. So I don't think we can skip over some of those things that were priorities that enhance the quality of life of the generation that will come through and utilize these things once we're all gone. We've been putting them on the back burner too long, and I think it's time we put a realistic timeline and live up to what the timeline is that we say we're going to do before putting something else in front of them. All of them are important, to enhance the quality of life, not only for the adults, but we're looking at the children and the generation that comes along. That's our future.
Thank you.
The next item is the $50,000 for the Harbor Center Pavilion. That's the intelligence pavilion at Harbor Center, and it's important that we continually upgrade things. This year, we're purchasing all-new lawn chairs, because when people come there, it's a face support, and if they may, may be their first trip, and we want to make sure that when they leave there, they say, this is a place that I want to come back to. The $85,000 in the hazmat program is used for abatement of lead, asbestos, and mold in city facilities, and that's put in every year, because there's always, during construction projects, we uncover something that may not be listed in our asbestos management plan, we have to remove it, we have to deal with it. At the conclusion of the year, that money's put together and we're able to do larger projects. Okay? The $225,000 for renovations to various buildings, it's maintenance to buildings that we need to take care of. There's a list that we have that we pull from the top each year, and we do those, it was part of a facility study, we're still working off of that, and this, it's part of our initiative for this operating budget, was to upgrade that facility study, to go back and look at those things and make sure that we have them in the right priority. But just for example, some of the things that are on the list this year that are going to be much more than the $225,000 is, if you go down the interstate and you look off to the right at the operations center, you'll see the Public Works Building. It's, it looks terrible there. That's one of the projects. We've took over the post office in Craddock, and the fire department is now using that. The inside of that building is atrocious and needs some work so that they can help them fulfill their mission. There are several other items that are vying for funding. The women's restroom at the Waste Management Building, that's a huge, and we have more females in the waste management industry now, and we don't have a bathroom facility and a dressing facility for them, but that's a top priority for the upcoming year to...
Dennis, the old post office, you said Public Works is utilizing that?
Fire Department. Did I say Public Works?
He said fire, okay.
I was thinking, since they're a next-door neighbor there. What are they, what are they using it for?
I'm going to have to defer that to Mike Stockton, who's...
As a logistics center, we have trouble getting stuff in and getting it out to the stations, so we're looking for a single place to collect and handle the stuff that comes in, paper products, everything else.
Staging area.
Yes.
So a storage area.
Well, with an office in the front.
Yeah, what's the cost of operation, and is it more valuable to try to market the building?
Something we can certainly look at.
That's another issue.
Building was vacant.
Yeah, just something to look at.
About a public safety building, and we desperately need one, because that ain't the only disaster he just described. They're all over this city and every little hellhole out here, and we need to find some way to consolidate.
But we end up with these piecemeal solutions, and we got these annexed and loaded all over.
Somebody over here with a five-year lease, somebody over here with a four-year lease.
We're doing a comprehensive look at these things. I think I sent you an email about a building that we're leasing, and makes no sense for us to...
Yeah, the library.
That's right.
That we got it.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, this is a, just a small amount of money for...
Yeah, this is mainly for concrete repairs to the decking, waterfront power repairs, just continuing ongoing through inspection, visual assessments of the seawall.
And then, this will release the deed of trust on this building.
Hallelujah.
Yeah.
All right.
Real quick question, can you go back seawall, Mr. Wright? Is there any future plans of putting any kind of facilities, utilities, services at them docks for ships coming in in the future? I know when we had our seawall festival, and then we had op sale, there were some issues with the services we could provide, what we thought we had there. We wound up getting Jim Bento to do a lot of that work, because we couldn't accommodate the ships that we had. Are we even looking at what we have there?
We are.
I mean, we do want to be able to invite folks here, but we need to be able to give them onshore power and things of that nature.
We're looking at the use overall, and we're, you know, I've threatened to take down, no parking, no docking.
No docking.
I've had the chief and others look through the city code to find out if there's, if you put the signs up, and you didn't. So it was done administratively, but we want that, we want those two inlets to be a happening place.
Right, right.
We want it to be crawling with people.
That's right.
So, yes, sir.
I know we had one hiccup during op sale that I got a couple of calls about.
Yusuf can tell you that we've got a problem, though, with the seawall, particularly down towards the Old Holiday Inn site, where it's beginning to show its age, and we've got some big repairs facing us. And the interesting thing is that when they put that sheet pollen down, they put rip wrap at the toe on the outboard side.
Should be on the end.
Should be on the end.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. What we have down there with that seawall is, when it was built... What we have down there with that seawall is when it was built, the toe started giving out on them and it started going into the river. So what they did is they brought in barges of rip wrap and they dumped them at the toe of the wall.
Where, at the very end where the Holiday Inn site used to be or along the whole boardwalk?
Right in front of the... At the corner where the north inlet is, from the corner down north.
To the Holiday Inn.
To the Holiday Inn.
So from that Harbor Towers building down, that whole piece there?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and that created a problem. We didn't know that they did that. When we started looking at replacing that section, what they... The Army Corps gave a permit to the localities to go out two feet in front of the existing structure to be able to build a new seawall. And when we tried to go out the two feet, we ended up finding the rip wrap so we cannot drive any new sheet piles in there. So now we're looking at... We're researching what we can and cannot do. We'll find a new design down there. And... All right, down the road.
Sounds like a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Stay tuned tomorrow night because we'll tell you about another water problem.
Oh, my goodness.
And it's a lot of rip wrap. They dumped two barges full. Can we sell it to the new tunnel?
How about, John, beyond the seawall while we're in that area, the lighting down that way? It's a lot of lights that are out. Can we address that?
Yes, sir.
Some of this?
We are addressing that. And James and I were just talking earlier tonight about purchasing some additional lights out of the funding that he currently has for the seawall. The problem are the lights themselves and the ballast and the fact that they were 480 volts and they're on the water. And every time we get a high tide, the water gets into the conduit system. It blows the ballast and blows light lamps. And we can fix them today. And I'll guarantee you, I'll get a call or Bernadette will get a call from the ferry telling us that we have a light out tomorrow. So we're trying to address that with some of the funds that James has for lighting on the seawall. And the low lighting from Harbor Tower down to the Old Holiday Inn site, that's been repaired. We pulled six or seven lamps up from the end, moved them to the front, and we purchased the seven lights to go back in place of that. So we realize that's a problem, and we're working to try to resolve it.
Okay, good.
All right. Lights and next slide.
This next project is one for the 1846 courthouse. And because of the age of that facility and its historic designation, we're bringing in someone from Colonial Williamsburg to do some brickwork. And that's not cheap. These guys are really, really expensive. And this is an estimate, if we just guessed the number of bricks, we talked to the gentleman about how much they charge. There's only two or three people in the country that probably that do this type of work because they make the mortar and the bricks the way they did in the 1800s. And in order to maintain the integrity of that historic facility, this is an expensive project. It also includes the preservation of the outside of the main library. If you go down and look, all of the mortar, well, not all of the mortar, all the stones would be gone. But what holds the granite into the walls on the parapet, all of that needs to be redone before it creates additional problem because water gets down in those open mortar joints and it just expands and contracts and freezes and falls. So this $400,000 is to address both of those facilities.
Where's the damage on the courthouse? All over or particular side?
Yeah, you can take your finger in places and just take the brick right out. It's in pretty bad shape.
So it's a brick or mortar or both?
Brick, mortar, both.
And these guys are like surgically remove parts, put it back, and vertiginous type work?
They do this in all these...
Old historic areas.
That are on the historic landmarks.
Okay.
And the $900,000 is to address an ongoing problem at the courthouse. Because of the artwork that they want to display in there, there's certain criteria that we have to meet environmentally. And the system that's in the 1846 courthouse currently is a water source heat pump. And we need to put a chiller in that whole complex and deal with both sides of that. Now, this $900,000 was a budget estimate. I think that number's going to come in a little bit lower than that. But in order to make sure we have funding to do the project once we start, we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to run into things. When you get into old buildings like that, especially the building next to it where the Sports Hall of Fame used to be, trying to get underneath of that building is going to be tricky with piping and just the design is going to be tricky on the building.
Is this a need or a want? And the reason why I say that, we've got a lot of needs out there in our community.
It's a need.
And, I mean, you're talking about a million dollars here we've been hit with.
If we want to continue having art in that museum, it's definitely a need.
When you say art in the museum, you're talking about an art exhibit?
Yes, sir.
I mean, art exhibits are only there for a short period of time.
I'm sorry.
The exhibits are only there a short period of time.
They're there every day.
Uh-huh.
They're there every day. They change.
Well, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but the same piece of art's not there, you know, week in, week out.
But when those artists, it's my understanding, and I'm certainly not, you know, an art major, but it's my understanding when that art...
Cut your ear off and be venged.
When that art comes in, there's certain criteria that they have to agree that they're going to meet in order to hang that art or to display that art in the museum. And we can't guarantee that with the system that we have in place. The system is over 20 years old. I guess whenever we go back and look at when the building was renovated last, there's definitely a need to do that. And this addresses the needs that the museum has shared with us in order to bring in first quality art exhibits.
And this is why we're spending so much time on this because these are projects that have an impact not only this year, but the next year, the next year, and the next year. And we want to make sure that you are first comfortable and then second that you set the priorities. So this is good.
And I'm not sure, and I'm sure you probably don't have that number now, but aren't we on our art museums and all, we're losing about $1.2 million a year? I thought we were somewhere with all our museums collectively. I know the Children's Museum is hitting home runs, but I think we're taking a bath on those, somewhere to the tune of that. So that... But yeah, we can discuss that later. But yeah, thanks.
We need to get the facts.
Yeah, that's a big ticket item there.
Next slide. Russell and Horace.
These are really IT-type projects. Good evening, council members, mayor, assistant mayor, city manager, and staff. The IT department has requested the replacement of several very important systems. These systems should have been, most of them should have been replaced a long, a long time ago. The first one I'd like to talk about is the radio system. And the radio system, I'mma list it as one, and that's only for numerical value. These systems are all important, very important. The radio system was installed in 1987. It's approaching 30 years. The normal life cycle for a radio system is about 20 years. So this radio system is now reaching 10 years over its life expectancy. And we are requesting that this be replaced.
Have we done something in the way of this already?
I thought we did too, Mayor.
I thought just last year we had...
We did. Well, Chief, can I answer a question for you? This was a three-year project, actually. We bought $3 million worth of radio last year that we replaced in public safety, gave them the most modern radios, and we intend...
Is that correct, the dead spot out in the Churchland area?
It did not.
It did not, sir.
It did not.
Was it correct?
It was supposed to do that.
Well, it didn't.
That's where it was sold. We were going to fix those areas and we didn't want to go to the public.
The whole system, when it gets redone, will fix it. But no, that one little step did not do it. And we're plagued too by the fact that this particular, if you want to say model, is no longer being made by the manufacturer because of the technology change that's coming about. And so we have to be concerned too about parts, how to get parts when pieces, components of your system go down.
So this will be, if we spend this four, that'll be $7 million?
And there's another four the next year.
There's another four next year.
It's an $11 million project.
But remember, now amortize that over 30 years and you get a feel, I mean, you've got... Don't send this back to the manufacturer. You've got good, good value out of this system. You've got 30 years out of it. It had a 20-year life. So you've got your money's worth for it. And it's one of those things where you gulp, you know, does it really cost that much? But you get value out of it. And this is a public safety thing, and I'm not trying to...
But is this a deferred, I mean, to keep getting into a situation where we got to reach in the pocketbook and pull out $11 million? Could we amortize that with funding to keep it updated as we go along?
This is an absolutely new system. When we get done with it, it takes about two and a half years to build it. When we get done with it, it'll be a totally new system. It'll be digital where we operate analog. Today, we'll be operating in a digital environment. All of our neighbors, Norfolk, have replaced theirs. Hampton has replaced theirs. Virginia Beach has replaced theirs. Suffolk is in the process of replacing theirs. And one of the things here is compatibility, system compatibility among our neighbors. We have to stay compatible for interoperability to be able to operate them with them on a day-to-day basis.
Understand.
The manufacturer actually stopped making parts for the system, our system, in 2011. There are still parts available, and they will repair the system as long as there's parts available. But we can't rely on that for many more years.
But being able to communicate with our sister cities is...
Very important for the police department, especially for people across the borders.
That's essential.
Yes. And eliminating all dead spots, that's very essential. That's another issue.
Will that do it? You know, we had $3 million and we were told that that would eliminate the dead spots.
The answer to that is...
Are we certain?
No.
We're designing the system to be citywide coverage and to have the appropriate redundancies and to move what's in the basement next door out to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail so that when you think about the worst weather event that we could have, we can still be running. We can still be communicating, not only with ourselves, but in a situation like that, we've got the state to communicate with, we've got the feds to communicate with, we've got our neighbors.
I understand, but will the officer in Churchland be able to communicate?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was one of the issues that I was going to address, was the fact that that system will enhance the coverage in Churchland, and we will get rid of that problem forever.
Terrific.
We've got the computer aided dispatching. That's the CAD system. That is the system that the dispatchers actually enter the data as they receive calls from the public. They reference that data as they dispatch the police officers on the street. That's a very important system. That system has been in existence since 1994. It's approaching 20 years. That system... The vendor we bought the system from, for the most part, no longer supports the system. I don't say they don't support it, but there's nothing that we can see coming down the road that would lead us to believe that in the future, they will be able to support the system. So we would like to move to a new system. And the police department and the fire department have looked at these systems and endorsed these systems. And we would like to get them approved and move on to these new systems. The crime analysis system, right now, today, we've got a very old crime analysis system. I don't really know how long, maybe Chief can give us some insight on that. But that system has been around for a long time. It doesn't integrate with the current CAD system. The new crime analysis system will go out to the new CAD system because they're made by the same people and draw down data. They could draw out maps of high criminal areas and things like that. They could pull that data right out of the CAD system. So with the new CAD system and the crime analysis system, it would bring a whole lot of information together.
All right. Thank you. Next slide.
Russell is going to talk about some of the other initiatives.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The system that we're looking at now, the case management, is a... It's actually called the Virginia Commonwealth Attorneys Information System, or VCAST. It's an automatic case management system used by the Commonwealth Attorney. It is pretty antiquated. It was a system developed by the state over 15 years ago. The state has reduced funding for the CAS over the last several years, and the system's now supported by a single programmer out of Virginia Beach on an outdated IBM Lotus Note server. Future plans, enhancements have been dropped on all Commonwealth Attorneys have been advised to seek and replace their CAS system. And the targeted date for dropping all support is sometime in the year 2013. The Commonwealth Attorney Office has requested that the IT department plan and support the implementation of a new management system. This proposed budget recommendation is to implement this prosecutor software that will log and track activities from the start to final disposition. The system will interface with the police department's criminal record system to share case-related information. The system will support digital storage of images, audio files, other documents, and follow associated anything with the case, where now they're putting them in records and having to pull them out of a drawer somewhere.
So the state told them to get a new system, but not to give them any money?
This is unfunded, you know, we're not going to do any more here.
The state office, the state, when we get in the system, the state doesn't send any money.
They're going to send the cities the money.
That's all we're going to pay for.
Let's go to this.
Okay.
All right.
One quick question on some of these communication improvements and I guess even with the Commonwealth Attorney, that's a communication improvement. Are there any grants available to offset some of these expenditures?
And...
Not just the state, but some of the equipment that we're going to be buying for public safety? Have we explored?
Double check.
Okay.
Yeah, forfeit your type money. Okay, now, the next application, this is a... Go ahead. I'm sorry. The next application, we're looking at replacing the city treasurer and the commissioner of revenue, are requesting the replacement of our taxation and billing systems with a single integrated revenue and collection system. This new integrated system will replace 13-plus standalone systems that include software applications such as business license, personal property assessment, real estate billing, trustee tax, Virginia income tax processing, dog license, cashiering, and delinquent tax collections. These systems currently generate around $150 million in revenue. The consideration of these tax and billing systems into a single revenue collection system will reduce the need to support and maintain separate applications, software databases. Our current tax and billing system communicate with each other on a limited basis, some that were designed over 20 years ago. The tax and billing applications that we have seen in the presentations will bring all of these tax and billing applications under one roof. The goal is to create a central customer information system. This customer information system will allow for our frontline employees to see a total profile of our customers and the receivables due to the city, enhance the service to our customers in a more timely fashion. It will allow the enhancement of current and delinquent collections. The delinquent collections become more efficient when we're doing wage liens... The delinquent collections become more efficient when we're doing wage liens, SOD stops, judgments can be done all at the same time. For one delinquent account, currently, we have to execute distressed collections on each application. A payment web portal will interface with these systems to allow for the convenient payment of options. A business website will be provided for business license renewals, trustee tax submissions, business personal property submissions and payments. These new online systems will provide and improve options for our customers and businesses to report and renew licenses without having to visit City Hall.
All right, cut the light on for a sec. If I may. Remember last, last week when I briefed you where we get our money from? 80% of our local, of our general fund budget is from money that we collect locally.
That's what I was just telling, that's what I was just telling Mr. Moody. At least, at least these guys do bring us money.
Yeah.
This is where money comes from. The, the, the other one just costs us money. So, but continue, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What happens is that as, think about, you have a residential house, you have a car, you have a boat, you have a business license. Each one of these is a separate database. You're in the computer that way five times. What this does is integrate them all so that when you go up and the, the city employee types in John Rowe, the whole profile comes up. And I might be current on 90%, but 10% I'm delinquent on, and I didn't come there for that delinquent. I don't leave until that delinquency is taken care of. This is a way to do our business better. It takes money to run this operation.
Makes sense.
And it's, it's fair. When you levy a tax, you, it's unfair not to collect that tax. It's not fair for the people who have to sit at the kitchen table and decide what they're going to avoid paying to pay their real estate tax rate, and then somebody escaped by not. So this, this is a more efficient way to do it. It's a fair way to do it.
Any of the other cities around us have the system?
We'll get you a list of the localities in Virginia that.
Is there any job savings?
Um, that's too early to tell. It really is too early to tell.
Only reason I ask about the other municipalities is because you won't be the first one out there on a new system.
The, the, one of the system, council meetings we did review is in Virginia. So there is some site visits that we could do.
But we don't know whether anybody in Hampton Roads is using it.
I don't think they have.
I don't know that answer, but I know that they're, they're, the company is, has customers in Virginia. We will find out who they are.
Okay.
Just my experience, I'm not saying this system, I'm just saying, I know my company spent over $300,000 on one system and it did nothing that they said. That's the only reason I ask.
Big question.
I, I would, I would hope that the treasurer and commissioner of revenue have checked these, these systems out. And before they recommended them to you. And knowing those, those guys, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure they have. But, point well taken. But I doubt they actually spent $67,000 and they haven't, they haven't listened to it.
Our last presentation was about four and a half hours with the company. And we went over a list.
But, but these guys and, and Ms., and our assessor here, they make our money for us. So, so if we got to spend a little bit of money to keep making that money so we, so we can.
We need to spend it to get the.
So if we stop raising, not raise taxes and other things, we're trying to do.
That's right.
I can, I can support that.
Let's go, next slide.
Let's get the money.
Parking garage, this is pretty self-explanatory. Do you want to highlight anything?
Yeah, this adds to the current CIP for concrete repairs at the County Street Garage, City Hall Garage, as well as some repairs on the first floor to deal with a surface issue down there.
Okay.
All right, and the, the last area is the school. We have $1.5 million in the CIP for schools and it breaks out to be, next slide please, a million dollars for the school bus replacement program. And I briefed you last week on this. They'll spec the buses. Buses will be ordered, rewrite the check. Hopefully, this will be the start of totally integrating the school CIP into your CIP so that there's only one CIP. And the other is the debt service payment for next year's payment on the Simondsdale.
Why do we have that in our budget? I thought they were paying that.
The debt is, the debt is the city's debt. The schools had paid two years, they paid $1,375,000 to the city, and that was put into the CIP budget. So this is just transferring back to the city what's left and what the schools paid. But they, they're, they're not paying any more after the two years that they've already paid us. So beyond, beyond, you know, paying down that, or drawing down that $2,750,000, then the city will be paying the debt service on Simondsdale going forward.
Okay.
But it was always our debt.
Well, there was some doubt. We tried to go back and recreate the transaction. And there was some expectation that they would have a longer-term funding of the debt service, but it's not there. It's not in the records.
Is the two years written there? Where are you getting two years from?
That's what they actually paid. There was a difference between what the, the city staff thought the agreement was and what the school staff thought the agreement was. And there was not, we, we are unable to find any formalized agreement.
Nothing in writing?
No agreement.
There, there was a draft agreement that was never formalized.
That's right.
We put $16 million in the CIP to build that school.
Yes, we did.
And kind of threw everything in a tailspin because of the $4 million that we had been given to the schools for capital projects. And this, four or five years ago was the issue. And I thought they were supposed to have been handling the debt service. That was my understanding.
That was mine too.
So now, we're going to be covering the debt service going forward. And that's what it's going to be on an annual basis?
It actually increases in future years.
How about if we give you the amortization of those, of that debt?
For what period of time?
Until the debt's paid off.
The debt's paid off.
Yeah.
It's total.
We got an interest fee loan, right, from the Obama administration to be able to, because it was a shovel-ready project, we got the $16 million to get that done. Right.
Yes, we did.
What's the other debt? I don't understand, how much?
We need to look at that.
To get an interest-free loan, what are the other debt services? What, what other debt are we having to wrestle with there to come up to find?
The, the bonds didn't get, didn't cover the whole amount of the cost, did they?
Yeah. I thought it was the, what was it?
There's the guy, you were in charge of the thing. You were the guy. It covered everything, right?
It covered it all.
The American bonds did?
Yes, sir. The QSCAP bonds.
It covered it.
100% of the school construction.
That's what it was.
And this is, the bonds are to be repaid over 15 years. They're interest-free bonds, as you stated. There was a agreement drafted that was supposed to be executed between the city and the schools that was never executed.
Okay.
And the schools did make a payment of $1,375, which we're now drawing down on to make the principal payments on this debt.
It's true. They made two. Oh, they made two payments of $1,375,000. So total of $2,750,000 is what the schools have paid towards the debt service.
And there was no agreement initiated?
No. The best, the closest.
There was an agreement that we found that was drafted, never executed. There was memorandum of understanding that was drafted, but it was never executed. How long ago was that? Uh, this was part of the stimulus funding that we borrowed and used these QSCAP bonds to construct the schools. It was a half, three years ago. As a non.
I'd like to see a draft copy of that.
Okay.
Okay. That's good.
All right. This completes this presentation. We're not going to have any other presentations because we want you to spend time on, on understanding the budget, asking us questions, telling us to go get more data. So you, you got, you always are in charge, but we meet again tomorrow night. We're going to give you a report on Willett Hall because we've worked hard to get this information. We'll have that report. That's something that's going to be a milestone. And I think we have one other item, but the rest of the work session tomorrow night is going to answer your questions about the budget. And I encourage you, as you go through the budget, as you have questions, send them to me. And what I'll do, I'll email the, your question and the answer to all your colleagues so that everybody's aware of what, what's on your mind and what you're looking for.
How soon can you get that information on merging those, those health plans? That $3.3 million?
Well, it's not the merger where they save the money. That's on the margin. Where they save the money is converting from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan. Because when you buy an insurance policy, first you're getting more coverage than what, no matter how you try to tailor it, there's always going to be something at the high end that you really don't need. It's that occurrence that happens one in every 10,000. Plus on top of that, you're paying a profit to the insurance company. So right off the bat, I'm almost sorry that I talked about the merger because that's not where the real savings is. The real savings is making the conversion from being fully insured to being self-insured.
So how soon can we get some information from Mercer or whoever's the guy that put us in a comfort zone that that is a real, actual number?
I have it tomorrow night for you.
Okay, that'd be great.
That's how we got the $3 million and then the 1.5 because, I mean, I, it, it's doable. That's the old-fashioned way of buying insurance, not, not the more efficient way.
A lot of companies do that, large companies, self-insured.
And I've sent you information that you should have received on, on Saturday. If you have any questions about anything that I sent from that point on, please, please.
Email it to me. It was good info.
Thank you for your patience tonight, but we covered some big stuff.
Most comprehensive.
I don't want you to be surprised when you say, oh my goodness, John only told us it was 15 million for these filters. No, sir, it's, it's going to be about 25 to 30 million.
We want to thank you and staff, y'all. You've done a great job.
Very comprehensive.
Yeah, they're, aren't they great?
Yes, absolutely.
I love the way they're telling the story. Very much got you.
What, yeah, they are really good. They give me goosebumps when I think about how good they are.
All right, good job. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
I mean, that was, that's, that's.